Okay. I'd like to call toward the Board of Education meeting for Thursday, August 17th, 2023. Please call the roll.
Dr. Fisher?
Here.
Mrs. Hunt?
Here.
Mrs. Raffano?
Here.
Mr. Taylor's absence?
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to need a motion in a second to approve the agendas presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffano?
Yes. And we're into presentation.
Great, thank you. We have one presentation tonight, and it's a pretty important presentation. And so I'd like to ask Dr. Fiore if she could come up. I want to kind of talk about what we've been doing for really about the last eight months, working on preparing a new strategic plan for the district. As you may recall, we worked and created a strategic plan about five years ago, and that expired at the end of last school year. So beginning about in January, we started working with Leadership Acceleration to start gathering data to really create a plan moving forward. So tonight, we're excited to bring this to the board. This is not for approval. This is a presentation for tonight to kind of go through what those themes look like. And then we will actually have multiple documents that we will be presenting to you next month for approval, which then we will put on our website. Couple of things. One is we would like to have a version of the strategic plan that any community member can get onto our website and understand very clearly what it says and what it means and what our actions are going to be. But really, at this point, well, we, our goal with the strategic plan is really to build what we've been doing over the years, obviously continue to get stronger and continue that our district is a designation or destination district for our family. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Fiore, and she's going to go through the nuts and bolts of it.
Okay. We talked a little bit about the process for this, but I just wanted to review kind of how we went about this. I know, Joanne, you were on the, on the team that did this. So in order to begin the process of strategic planning, we looked at, how do we gather data? You got to have data as to what your needs are, right? There's a lot of things that we do really, really well, and there's always areas for improvement or areas of need because things change in the world. So to start that process, it was, okay, how do we get focus groups in here? You know, what data do we already have that we can analyze? Report card data, any type of social, emotional learning data, any district-wide assessment data? And then we want to hear from all of our stakeholders. So I know the board was interviewed. We had parent focus groups, community member focus groups, a business-specific focus group. We had student focus groups at middle and high, and then teachers at all grade levels came in. And then we did an administrator one for assistant principals and supervisors because they weren't in the district admin team. And all that was to gain feedback on really, you know, what are we doing well and where, what are the areas really to develop themes, areas that we need to improve on? So that, all that was gathered. In the meantime, the admin team looked at a SWOT analysis, just to look at where are our strengths and weaknesses as an admin team? So that data was gathered. And then a survey went out to all of our stakeholders as well. Again, high school students, staff, community, parents, and just to get more information. So all that was brought together for the smaller team, a strategic plan team, to go through so we could derive what are the themes that we need to set goals for, as well as what is our vision? Is the vision we have still meet our needs? What's our mission? And really, what do we value as a district? So that's what we were coming out with, was values, mission, vision, themes, and then goals in those areas. So as I mentioned, we had six focus groups attended by staff. We had three by students. We did that SWOT analysis, board member interviews, parents. There were five groups. And then, because we kind of broke it out by elementary, middle, and high, and then we had some that were virtual so they could join by Zoom and some that were in person. And these were all led by Leadership Acceleration. They're the ones that facilitated, sorry I failed to mention that at the beginning, all the data gathering. They led the focus groups. They worked on the survey. They led the SWOT analysis. So that we, and they had over 2,000 survey responses. So all that data is all gathered and compiled into the following values. So the values that are all of our stakeholders shared with us were, we want to be globally aware. We want to build a community of belonging among all by embracing inclusive practices. We want to be optimistic. Model, we want to model a positive mindset, and that's from staff to families, students. We want confidence. A goal in our whole child team has been self-confidence of students, and that's confidence, too. We have amazing teachers. You know, believe I can be anything I strive to become. Resilient. If the pandemic hasn't taught us anything, is that we need to be resilient. Demonstrate the ability to withstand setbacks, bounce back stronger. Engaged, actively involved to learn and grow. And excellence-driven. We want to motivate to overcome obstacles and achieve academic success, whatever that looks like for every student. And be kind. Show generosity and empathy and attitude and behavior towards others. So this was what, and so you like, I like the nice little acronym there, the GO Creek. So these are the values that our community of all stakeholders feel like are important to us for Beaver Creek Schools. So along with that, led us to a vision. And in our vision discussion, we had lots of discussions because our other vision was similar, you know? So we, but we didn't really feel like it needed to be changed much because it's still applied, you know? So we came up with something, a slight, slight version was inspiring and empowering tomorrow's leaders. So that's the vision that came out of all of this work, which it's very similar to our other one, but I think definitely applies. And then the mission was, together, we provide a safe, supportive learning environment to engage all students with innovative experiences to reach their greatest potential. So that's our values, our vision, vision, and our mission. Any questions so far? Okay, so then we got into, that's great, that's what guides us, that's our, you know, common vision. And then, so with that vision, what are the areas we need to focus on? So five themes emerged from the data, and those themes were teaching and learning, which you could, you could guess for all, that's where in the business of teaching and learning. But facilitating continual growth and development of staff to provide high-quality, innovative instruction because we want our kids to grow and achieve. And, you know, growth and achievement are a little different because achievement is hitting a mark and growth is, you know, always, and sometimes for us, it's growing the highest students, continuing to make that year's growth is a challenge. So teaching and learning is a focus and it always will be. Whole child development, this is meeting the unique needs of students, of the whole child by the social, emotional behavior and mental health supports, really removing barriers to learning. So, and engage in inclusive practices to help each student reach their full potential. So that's a whole child development theme. And operational excellence, this is very much tied to all the procedures and processes, ensuring student safety so that kids can learn and succeed. That includes operations, technology, HR, transportation, food service, safety, and facilities. So that's the operational excellence theme. And then identity and culture, and that's that common identity across the district that includes shared beliefs, behaviors, and outcomes, as well as the defined values and culture areas of focus to ensure optimal environment for students. And then last is college and career and community engagement. And this is something we've talked about a lot over the last few years, but that making sure we have those paths for kids, whether their future endeavors, whether it be careers, whether it be the college path. How do we involve our community groups in that? How do we involve businesses and, you know, really tap into all those resources we have in the community? And we do that, but we can always do a better job as you grow, especially with our career technical pathways. So making sure that they have what they need. So those are our areas, the five areas of focus, and then we've set goals within each one. So the strategic plan themes kind of have a little acronym as well, which is PRO. Personalization of teaching and learning, respond to the needs of the whole child, optimize operations, unify identity and culture, and dedication to college, career, and community engagement. So to go through each one of them, each theme has three goals underneath it. So you're like, wow, 15 goals, wow, I mean, that's a lot. I do want to say that not all of them start in year one, and not all of them are a big project. Some of them are a role of one of the cabinet members that will lead their teams through accomplishing some of these. So it's not, it's just that, you don't know, it's not quite as overwhelming as it looks, and we're not going to take it all on as soon as this is approved if we have a kind of phase-in plan. But first off, we have teaching and learning. And the first goal within that is that realizing the portrait of a graduate. So it's really creating a team so that we can assess and define a portrait of a graduate because, I mean, the jobs are different than they used to be out in the field. What kids need to be successful are different than they used to be. The needs of our kids are different. So what is that portrait of a graduate? And how do we make sure we align our coursework, like our program of studies, to make sure kids have all the things they need that we want them to have in this portrait of a graduate? So that's the first one. And the second one is college readiness planning team. And this is really looking at, what is the college preparation? CCP is a big thing in our district. We learned the other day that about 55% of our kids take online classes. Well, making sure we give our parents all the education that they need, you know, that what, how, what are online classes for high school students in college? What do they look like, right? They're great for some kids, but they're not great for others. There are options to go to campus. What are strengths of that? What are positives? What are negatives? What are the academic pathways? If your kid's interested in engineering, what courses do they need to take, right? So really thinking about, you know, college readiness and how do we prepare kids and kind of get them on the right academic pathway? And then a learning experience team is that just making sure we have engaging lessons and new learning experiences, best practices, making sure that we're enhancing all academic outcomes for students. So those are three areas we'll focus on in teaching and learning because if you look at the three-year objective, it's that continual growth and development of staff to provide high-quality, innovative instruction. So we always have to be doing best practices. We always need to stay current with what's out there. Technology is a huge part of that. Technology changes all the time. So that's all in that learning experience team. What do our kids need to be innovative and have the skills they need for that portrait of the graduate? If you have any questions, you can jump in anytime.
I'll ask one just.
Okay.
On that first one, I liked the portrait of a graduate. One of the things that I think strikes me as we talk about our goals for our graduates is that they are very diverse, right? And I heard someone the other day list, I like this as a way of thinking about graduate goals for, for students, the four Es. Are you planning to go on further education? Are you going to enlist? Are you going to go to employment? Or are you going to do entrepreneurship? And I thought that was a good way to kind of cover the waterfront of like what a successful options are for, for our students as they graduate. And I just, it occurs to me with that first goal, that trying to fit all those different views into a single portrait might be challenging. So maybe it's portraits of graduates, or maybe, maybe they're common themes across all four that, that you can pull together.
And I think that team will be helpful in designing that because what, within all those, what are the skills they need to take that, that E path? And like you said, are they the same?
Yeah.
You know? So I do think that'll be interesting. And, and you know, a lot of schools have been creating these portrait of a graduate. And I think it is good to know, what is it that we want our graduates? What skills do we want them to have when they leave us? And then we have to make sure our coursework gets them there, you know? So. Okay, we'll go too far. Backwards, wrong way. Okay, so whole child development, this is three goals as well. And elementary support team, this is probably going to be more of a role because we have an elementary curriculum supervisor and, and we have our new element, our supervisors of elementary student supports, which is making a huge difference already. But this is the support time and resources in place to facilitate consistent whole child curriculum implementation across the district so that we enhance student experience and support a successful transition to middle school. So really that consistency among our six elementary schools and, you know, something like we're already doing, so a lot of the stuff we, you know, kind of know it's coming, but we're doing youth empowerment now. We're starting youth empowerment lessons in fourth and fifth grade, which I think will be great, but we want to make sure we have consistency because they're all going to middle school and they all need to have the same skills. So how do we have the support time and resources to make sure those things happen? And then staff and student safety is Jeff, you know, and I think Tyler will work with him as well, lead our safety, district safety team. And they're always looking at, how can we, you know, make our buildings the safest they can be? And I think, you know, doing risk assessments and things like that, just to see vulnerabilities. But that'll be part of the role in that district committee, but with a goal of, you know, just continuing to elevate staff and student safety with new strategies and measures, just so that we keep the safest environment we possibly can for our kids. And I think that'll always be an area of growth. And then the whole child support team, promote and connect and implement available resources for students. And that'll be a role as well because we have a whole child committee that works. I lead that. And we look at the panorama data and this year, our goal is adult supportive, we've had adult supportive relationships for a goal for a few years, making sure we find those kids that don't have someone at school they feel like they can talk to, and finding them and finding someone that has some common interests. And then self-confidence, how do we find? Every kid has a strength, may not be academic or athletics, but they all have them, and we need to find them. So kind of find ways to figure out what all kids are good at. So things like that we'll do throughout the year. So that is whole child. Operational excellence, this is reducing barriers to learning, assessing student needs to create a plan to remove the barriers for learning. I will tell you, that is, I'm very excited about our school-based mental health grant because we have a social worker supervisor and we have five and a half new social workers. And we're just, we have a great team of supports for our kids and, because a lot of those barriers are social, emotional, and mental health. So we're already working on that, but there are other barriers that we'll seek out and see what they are and see how we can support them. And then communication. Communication is always, I think, a part of every strategic plan because even if you are doing a great job at it, things change. And there's other ways to do it, and people want things a different way, and everyone wants something different. So creating one source for public access and specific parent information updates and curriculum and resources, kind of streamlining where parents go, trying to make it easier on them, well, is a goal for us next year, and that'll be a project. So that'll be a good project. Mike and Annika will be working on that together, I'm sure. And then facilities planning team, you know, we're kind of in process with that. We have a master facilities plan, but, you know, complete the plan and to encompass both new facilities and then improvements to current facilities. So, and that team has been working and is, is continuing to work, so. And then, identity and culture development, something that was pretty loud and clear in a lot of the surveys was the student voice. It is absolutely fascinating to listen to the students. If you ask them, they will tell you. And sometimes there isn't a lot of time to get all those, that input, you know, from kids. So the more we ask kids, the more we learn. So making sure this is be a student representative voice team. So we have a mechanism at each school to incorporate student voice in the experience. And we've been, I know Mr. Otten has a student advisory group at the high school. The middle schools are taking that, like people are starting to build these to get more input, but we want a consistent student voice, and we need a team to develop what that looks like, how they're going to get feedback, who they're going to choose. So we get all voices, you know? So I think that'll be great. And I think we're already, a lot of these were emerging, but we have a lot more work to do. You know what I mean? But, so I think that's good. Staff culture champion team, they will look at strategies and plans with staff to optimize a collaborative learning community. If you don't have a positive culture, it's really hard in any organization. Culture is huge.
That is so important.
It is. And I believe that'll entail working with staff. How can we, you know, how can we work on self-care? How can we work on staff input? You know what I mean? How can we get staff voice? You know, people need to be heard, and if the decision isn't what they want, they need to know why. So how do we build up the cultures in our building and district-wide? And then one identity team is the utilizing the new vision, mission, and values to establish a unified district identity, fostering unity, trust, and consistency. And right now, we have a lot of different identities with our elementaries and our middle school, and this will be a long-term goal, and it won't be all at once, but it will be a lot of input, I think, from our community and all our stakeholders as we move forward. How do we, how do we do that? And last is college, career, and community engagement. And this is where we had, you saw the college, the college readiness stuff on the teaching and learning. This one includes the career readiness team. We, I'm so excited about our two new pathways at the high school. So, because those lead to both straight to the workforce and, or college. So it's a path for either, right? But we have two, and we need business partnerships, and we need community involvement. So we really need to, what are those partnerships? Like we get emails from people that, you know, want to partner and like we got to, and we reach out, and we, we need these people to, you know, come in and can they talk about their jobs? Can they excite kids about manufacturing, right? There's manufacturing day. So how can we get those career experiences for kids? Because we recognize not all kids are going to college, and that's okay. Community, parent, and alumni engagement, that's a piece we haven't really had as a strong, you know, alumni group. And, you know, a plan that is led by districts to expand community outreach, mentoring, engagement, and involvement opportunities, you know, involving more of our community and parents and alumni in our schools. And advanced district partnerships and business advisory team, what are the high-impact partnerships in our community that can help with internships for kids, that can help with, you know, job shadowing, things like that, or might want to partner with us for different endeavors we take? So that, that's kind of, this whole theme and objective is focused around career readiness, involving the community, parents, alumni, and business partnerships, which was really a theme that came out that we really need to grow in. So with those, that's a lot, that's 15 goals right there. I made that sound very simple, didn't I? Our next steps will be, we'll be bringing you a more of a product, like an actual plan to the next board meeting to ask for your approval. And then we'll start defining project teams. Like I said, I think we'll probably end up with maybe eight or nine projects and then roles, but the goals will still be achieved. It just, there might be a role, a person, and a team that's already in place that can fulfill that versus it being like a whole new project for us. Some of us, Mike Schuman organized a project management training the end of July. So a team of us went through project management training, which was, it was really interesting to go through. It was two days and just how, you know, the deliverables, the timelines, the, you know, how do you, how do you orchestrate it all from beginning to end? So that was helpful. And then our leadership team here, our cabinet team will be monitoring all these projects. We hope, we've asked our administrators, administrative team, what projects are you interested in? Well, we want you to be a part of it, lead it with a cabinet member, involve different people. So growth opportunities for our leadership as well. And then we will provide you with an annual update on all the goals.
I think this is exciting.
I do.
It really is.
There's lots of good stuff in it.
It's a very robust plan.
It is.
And I would like to, we, we had, we've spent hundreds of hours working on this, but I would like to commend Dr. Fiore. She was really kind of the gatekeeper, kind of organizing a lot of these pieces. So I want to commend her for the work she's given to this process. You wouldn't be here today without her leadership, so. You wouldn't be here today without her leadership, so appreciate what she's done.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So more to come next month on that topic. And that concludes presentations.
There are no questions or comments from the public, so we need a motion in a second to approve the July 20th, 2023 regular Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's call the vote.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rogano?
Yes.
And Mr. Stein?
Yes.
And we're into items for board discussion.
So we have three items for board discussion tonight. The first one is a joint meeting with Beaver Creek Township. And I've been working with Ryan Rushing over Beaver Creek Township really the last few weeks, trying to coordinate this meeting. And they have asked, we have not been to the township in quite some time and they've been here a few times. So they have asked that they would like us to attend over at one of their meetings. However, they're giving it a little spin here, which I think is, is helpful for us. They would, one of the dates that they proposed was October 19th, which is our typical board meeting. And they have proposed to us that we, they would call it a special meeting on their behalf. We would do our joint meeting together and then they would allow us to finish our work in that room so we would not have to schedule another meeting. So if the board is willing to do that, I think that's the best of both worlds. We'll be able to do the joint meeting with the township and then proceed on with our work in October. So it'll be our October 19th meeting. We would announce at our September board meeting the location of that. And obviously we would publicize that on our webpage so that our community knows that we will be in the basement over at the firehouse for the 19th of October.
So it'd be the same time?
Same. That is a good question. I will ask them, I believe their meetings start at five, but I believe they may, it's interesting how many dates we threw around. We did not talk time. I will confirm and I will let you know, but good thing it is October. I believe they probably will be okay with us going to 6:30, but I will double check just to make sure that all our board members can be there if it is at five o'clock. So we'll double check.
That's good.
Okay.
So is the board okay with that for me to proceed? All right, then I'll proceed with Ryan and we'll work towards the October 19th and I'll get the details set up and we'll, we'll design that joint meeting together and you'll be able to see that agenda in plenty of time before the meeting. Now, the second item is community chats and community forums. So you should have two documents that are sitting before you. I'm going to talk about just the community chats. So prior to COVID, I was going out quite a bit in the community at different restaurants and we, and even though you're saying, hey, we're going to be at Kroger's, we're going to be at Panera, we're going to be at Starbucks, we're going to be at Bob Evans, I'm thinking of all the places, the Beaver Creek Library. We, I honestly can tell you, we've always had someone that came to those meetings just to talk about something that was going on in the district. Last year, we re-initiated these and we did them all in-house here at the central office and they were not well attended. So what I'm proposing here this year is there are 16 dates for this school year that are on this page. And you can see the, the central office location will, will be used four times, but we're looking at different locations. One Panera, because we used to do it at Panera. Panera is a good location because it's a big area. And so depending on where you sit, it kind of opens it up. So Panera, both at the Fairfield Mall and Panera at the Green, we've done it there in the past. And then obviously Beaver Creek Library. So you can see the times vary between a 10 o'clock to 11, a two to three. We do have a four to five and a 4:30 to 5:30 time slot as well. So I just need to verify, Donna and I are working on these to verify, not that the restaurants need to know we're coming, but really Beaver Creek Library. So we're just going to confirm some dates with them to make sure that those are in place. Once these are in place, we will have these on our webpage. And obviously our board members are always welcome to attend if you have time, if you want to come out and talk with the community. But it's a great opportunity for me to get in front of our community and answer questions that they might have or listen to concerns that they might have. And then on the next page, the cabinet has met and we met with our building principals as well and asked them to come up with ideas. And so before you, we have six ideas and we are planning to do six of these forums for this upcoming school year. So there were probably 20 ideas that came up and some of them were very similar, but we've kind of funneled them down into these six. I want to tell you a little bit about what these six are. We're going to talk about school finance. We think it's important to talk about how schools are funded and how that impacts schools. That is the talk that we've done for so many years in the past, so that will be one of our items.
That's a good point.
That will be, yeah, that we'll be discussing. Safety and security in Beaver Creek schools, that is a hot item that we want to just get on the books now so our families know to come out. And you may remember we've done this in the past where we've had the sheriff's office come, we've had the police department come, fire department, and we just talked about a lot of those processes that we do together. We do a curriculum open house, so we would like to use that as a community forum where we can present to families our curriculum and give them the opportunity to look at what the materials are that we utilize. The Beaver Creek City School Master Facility Plan, we feel that's an important topic that we need to get out there and invite our community to come in to our high school to really get in the nuts and bolts of that project and what does it look like moving forward. So I see that being something more in the spring. College readiness, this is really a topic that we feel for families, kids going into junior high up through high school to start giving them an opportunity to start visually and better understanding what lies before their child and, and the courses that are available to them for how they want to move forward. And then finally, this is a big topic that Bobby and her team will be leading and that's emotional intelligence. And you'll notice it says Beaver Creek Elementary Schools. That will be held at our elementary schools. So there will be six evenings of that that will be delivered to families because we feel it's such an important topic for our families and no better place to do it than in your elementary school. So, so anyway, I want to bring this to the board. This is what we would like to do. We will, on Wednesday of next week, we will confirm dates because we need to look at building space time and make sure that we've got the time available, that we're not trying to book something that has a concert going on at the high school. So once these are done, I will give these back to you with dates on them and then we will also post these on our website and we will publicize these out to our community. So these will be items that we put in our Creed Connection. These will be items that we push out through social media just to remind families of the opportunity to come out and learn about these. Any questions about this? So I'm pretty excited about this because these are, I always referred to these as like college class, like you never liked going to them, but when you're there, you're so glad you went and you learned so much. I mean, it was like, that's how I always felt about my evening college classes. Didn't like driving to them, but I was so thankful that I went. And so that's kind of how we feel about the forums, so. And that concludes item B. Item C, just want to tell the board, you have in your board book tonight, the sponsorship, marketing rights and service agreement with Miami Valley Hospital and Beaver Creek City Schools. This has been about a 16-month process working with the hospital. There have been dramatic changes that have happened with Premier Health Miami Valley over the last couple of years. They have 44 school districts that they have contracts with and Beaver Creek is considered a legacy contract. So what we've been informed is we're probably one of the top three contracts in their division in Premier Health. And so our kids, our community is very important to Premier Health. And so working with them, you know, you have attorneys at the table and attorneys are talking literally about, I don't like this word, well, that word needs to be that. I mean, it was really defining what each word means is where we got down to. And after a very long, arduous process, we finally found ourselves in a place that we all agree we're in a good place. So we're very excited to stay with Premier Health. We're signed, this is a three-year deal with Premier Health. They do provide financial support to the district. We've utilized that in the past for athletics. And they also, probably the biggest thing that they provide is they provide our athletic trainers to our students, which is an incredible responsibility for us to have, for our kids to have those experts with us. So just want to let you know that I would like to commend John Clemens. John has spent a lot of time working with Ben, their attorney. And when you have two attorneys that shake hands when they walk out of the room, you know, it's probably been a good process. So those two guys really respected each other. So glad to get this behind us. And that concludes items for board discussion.
Okay, and to financial reports, I need a motion in a second to approve the following. The July 2023 financial reports, fiscal year 24 amended certificate of estimated resources and appropriations and the July 2023 donations.
Second.
Any discussion?
Real quickly, I, I, right now, the only thing that financially has happened in the month of July, because we just got started, is that the county auditor is collecting taxes. And if you look at page three, which is your revenue comparison chart right here, you'll see that there's this dip this year. And that's because normally what happens as, as people are paying their taxes, the county auditor is paying out what's called advances. And normally there's three advances. Well, he did the first two and then he put in for the third one, but it didn't get processed by the county offices. So we missed that third advance, so that's why we're $9 million short, then shorter than we normally would be. But it will be coming out in the final payment and so we will get it, but that's the only reason why we're short right there. I also did tell you that after Paul and I attended the budget analysis discussion, that hopefully I would have a little bit more information for you on maybe what we would be seeing. But what they made note of is that if your county went through a reappraisal or a triennial update in 2022, which we did, and then the county auditor files their abstract in May, so none of that had been taken into account when they did those estimates, because they were like, your estimates should be, they said, everybody except for the counties that went through that. So we still don't have any more concrete numbers than what we had before. The only thing that I know is, you know, the state minimums went from 5% to 10%. We'll certainly see something from there. Our first payment will be coming in October based on the new state funding. And I don't see that, I mean, as far as I know, they're not going to release any more estimates or anything. They're just waiting at this point and they're, you know, going ahead and starting the calculations and everything. So I won't know anything truly until October. So that's where we are at this point, so.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, please call the vote.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rogano?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
And Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're into new business. I'm going to need a motion in a second to approve the following. The employment salary changes, leads of absence and terminations. The approval of participation in free and reduced lunch program at all schools, participation in free and reduced breakfast programs at Beaver Creek High School, Ferguson Hall and Parkwood Elementary School. Approval of type four reimbursements. Approval of corrected fiscal year 23 type four reimbursement. Approval of sponsorship, marketing rights and services agreement with Miami Valley Hospital, Premier Health. Approval of left fiscal year 24 bus stops. Okay, there are a lot of them. I just want to tell you, I want to know how many bus stops there are and God bless these people for putting these together. I mean, I just had to say that because I just can't even imagine coordinating them. Okay, I just had to say that. And approval of Neola board policies, first reading, 7/20/23. You can see the binder here.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only thing that I'll say is this list is pretty consistent with what we see in August, so nothing out of the ordinary.
It's a busy month.
I was just going to say that I'm going to need to abstain from this vote because my sister is on the employment list and so I can't vote with my family members.
Okay. So please call the vote.
Mrs. Rogano?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hunt?
Abstain.
Thank you.
And we're into announcements. September 4th is Labor Day, so no school, all the offices are closed. September 9th and 10th is a Beaver Creek popcorn festival and we'll all be there in some form at the Beaver Creek Schools booth. And Tuesday, September 19th is the next Board of Education meeting at 6:30. And we're into board comments. Mrs. Hunt?
I just want to wish our football team good luck. I wore my Build the Dam shirt today for Coach Colvin, so they have their first game tonight at Xenia at 7:00 PM. If anybody's not have, doesn't have plans, get in your car, get over there. You have to buy tickets online.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Mr. Stein?
I want to say congratulations to the Treasurer's Office for the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. And a big thank you to Joy, Jamie, Holly, Robin, Tanya and Marlin. That's, we're very grateful to have you guys and I believe they said less than 5% of public entities get this award, so it's an awesome achievement. Thank you so much.
It's awesome, yeah. I, I really like to thank my, my team, oh my gosh, very, a great, and Jamie leads them and yeah, we, they do a great job. So, yeah, thank you.
And happy start of school.
Dr. Fisher?
I want to say, and I know I've said this before, but I am just consistently impressed at how much our district is committed to constantly improving. And I want to thank Bobby Fiore for sharing with us our strategic planning activity because sometimes those consistent improvements or little tweaks to improve our process here and there. And sometimes you just got to take a step back and look at the big picture and say, where do we want to focus our effort to get better over the next five years? And, and both are important and I'm excited about the strategic plan. Two things that really struck me, I mean, there was a lot, but two, two things that I really liked. One was I like the idea of starting to build identity and recognizing our shared and common values as a community. I think that helps bring people together. And in particular, I like that you described it as something we're gonna, we're gonna like discover, not something that we're gonna say, here's what our identity is. It's, let's talk to everybody and get everybody together and talk about and identify those shared values. That's great. And then business partnerships too. I think, you know, I think that's been something that's been kind of simmering and worked on, but I think that's a great opportunity both for our district and our students to, to excel and have new opportunities. So I'm excited to see both of those two things in the future. And happy start of school.
And it has been a happy start of school. I was at Shaw this morning and these little kindergartners are just precious, I just have to tell you. And they're bouncing in and they have the second graders guiding them in, because these are big second graders, you know? And they know the ropes, so it's just adorable. And parents are happy they're bringing their kids in. Teachers are out there, we were welcoming the kids. It was just a fun morning and it brought back so many memories. These buses rolling in, kids getting off, teachers all excited. I'm like, oh yeah, I miss those days. But I have to share this. So when, you know, opening day, first of all, before I go on, I want to thank Darren Schwederman for the incredible way he put together the new member breakfast and opening day. You always do a great job and I know it's a lot of work, so thank you Darren. It is really appreciated. So when the teachers went back to their buildings after opening day and they have these meetings, Susan Pivler, the teacher, the principal at Shaw, every year they told me they have a theme. And this year's theme is be the game changer. And she always, because she is a crafty person, she's into things, she always makes something and every teacher gets something. And this year they had game pieces, which is really cool. And some of these teachers have them glued outside their doors, some are inside. But I was talking to the teachers this morning, they're so excited because they said when they met, there were games all over the tables when they met. Everybody was excited, there was Twister, like I want to see that going on. But I mean, and so I think our principals just really are into this and so are our teachers. So I want to thank everybody, our administration, our teachers, our custodians, everybody that work in this, that works in this district. They make this district what it is. They really do. I mean, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Otten. Thank you, Joy. Thank you, every single person sitting in this audience. Thank you for what you do for this district. If a warrant for all of you, for Jeff, for Tyler, for Bobby, where's Michael Schuman? I know he's in there. I mean, seriously, Annika, thank you so much because it's because of all, because of all of you, Beaver Creek is what it is. And we talk about a positive culture, that's what you all represent for our kids. So it's no wonder these kids and parents are walking into school this morning and everybody's excited. And I'm saying hello and parents waving to me like, I don't know who she is, but okay, she's But okay, if she's saying hello, it must be okay. So thank you all. I hope everybody has a wonderful school year. And with that, I need a motion and a second to take us into Executive Session Four, the Appointment, Employment, Dismissal, Discipline, Promotion, Demotion, or Compensation of Public Employees Ohioir Vice Code 121.22G1.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.